Do we need a new book, Justin?
So as soon as you get the camel and start.
Did you have a water?
No.
Okay, then probably not.
Probably not. So whose water is it?
I don't know. I wouldn't drink it.
Uh, I'm surprised they're not here. Let me text him.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Lundary Town Council Meeting. Today is November seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, free of any injustice.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. As is our tradition, we take a moment of silence to pray for those people who serve us here and abroad, and for those first responders here in Lundary who take care of us. Thank you. Okay, folks, um, we usually start off with, we start off with public comment. Given the numerous number of phone calls that I've received in the last twenty-four hours since the tax bill went out, I'm going to make a, an overall statement and try to, based on the questions I received, I put together some information, and I'm trying to explain some of that as we start, so that if you have questions, perhaps this may help you with asking them, or may answer some of them. This year's tax rate is, so our years, fiscally, our years run from July first to June thirtieth. So we're in the middle of our fiscal year right now. So when you get your July first tax bill, that is, that's the first portion of your bill. So for example, I got my bill, and the overall, the overall tax number that you're going to pay is the total tax number at the top of that bill. Your first bill is for one dollar amount, and the second bill gets adjusted in accordance with what passed at the polls that passed March. This year, we had a revaluation year, so that made some, some things different. But the dollars being collected in this bill is for this fiscal year, and funds the, the towns and the schools for this fiscal year. Just for clarification purposes. So the tax rate went down from twenty-one eighty to nineteen thirty-nine. Had we not done the assessments, the tax rate would have gone up to twenty-two forty-seven. Assessments are based on a ninety to a hundred percent, ninety to a hundred and ten percent ratio that the town, that the state gives to us in order to be able to set our, set our valuations. April first, those valuations are set, and that's the way it works by, by DRA and state law. For those folks that are here, and you may or may not know, eight percent of all taxes are paid by the power plant in town. So they pay eight percent of the total taxes for the town. Commercial versus residential. A new process is going to be, be discussed and hopefully started by the town council, so that we move away from doing valuations every five years, and move to doing valuations every two years. The software that was appropriated by the town, by the town voters last year will enable us to do that, so that we can take out these commercial spikes that have, these spikes that have been happening, and also address the commercial abatements that have been happening. There's a piece of the, of the formula and puzzle that works with DRA, the Department of Revenue, that if we drop below into the eighties, it enables the commercial pieces of property to be able to go out and take advantage, greater advantage of our, our abatement laws here in the state. So if you look at your, your tax bill, you'll see that there is a, an amount of money that goes for state education. You'll see there's an amount of money that goes for school education. Here in Lundary, seventy-two percent of every dollar that comes in, so that's seventy-two cents on every dollar, goes to education. So people have asked me, and I've, I've heard on, you know, questions being asked on social media, where did all the revenue go? Since, since two thousand and ten, we have raised twenty million dollars in new revenue. During that same period of time, the school budget increased sixteen million dollars. In two thousand and ten, we had five thousand one hundred children in the schools approximately. Today, we have four thousand one hundred and fifty children in the schools, including the children from Hooksett. In two thousand and ten, the cost per pupil, including transportation, of the total budget was twelve thousand a student. Today, it's eighteen thousand dollars a student. The Hooksett tuition is twelve thousand dollars a student. Over the last two years, over the last seven to eight years, the town has stayed either on default or under default. Over the last two years, the voters have approved a school budget over default by between three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars. With regards to the CIP, the CIP is the Capital Improvement Report, in which I have been involved with for almost fifteen years. This is a budgeting tool used by the town council, the Budget Committee, and the school, and the school board. Each group uses it to evaluate their budget and see what bonding we may or may not do for our facilities or not for the town. It came to light this year that it was also supposed to be reviewed between the Budget Committee and the town council. That's never happened before, but we actually did it in joint session in public. So those that are out there saying that it's never been done, as you know, as said many times in this country today, fake news. CIP projects. This year's CIP has seventy million dollars in school expansion, maintenance over, over the next five years. One project is to add kindergarten as a full-day piece. The school department has to take this to the ballot for voter approval to add kindergarten by state law. The operational cost to add kindergarten to full day, as stated by the school department, will be between eight and nine hundred thousand dollars a year in additional operational costs. They will have to add a gym, a cafeteria, and other services and meet ADA requirements to be able to house the students in that building. They're also looking on that same thirty-eight million dollars to add new classrooms to all the elementary schools. Mind you, at the same time, we are down a thousand students. They're also looking for twelve to fifteen million dollars in repairs, three to four million dollars in turf fields, and a new SAU office for four million dollars. The town side, with regards to repairs, we created a maintenance trust fund a number of years ago. And what that means is, is we save as we go, and then we pay for things as we go. So the interesting thing here is, is that people keep asking me, where's the money going? Last year, the town, the, the school offices came to the point of where they felt that they were not inhabitable by them. That was, you know, there's no actual medical diagnostic proof that was shown, but they decided that they needed to move. The town, through a citizen, was asked, would you give them a two-million-dollar interest-free loan? We have something called the Undesignated Fund Balance, and it can be used for things like this, which would be some sort of an emergency, where we could loan them two million dollars to be able to build a new facility right here next to the, to the, to the town, and then figure out if we could house them in trailers or in the schools or something for six to eight months while we tried to build this building. And that would be, they would pay us back in a ten, in ten years at two hundred thousand dollars a year. We approached the school with that. They told us they weren't interested. Instead, what they did was, is they leased the building for ten years at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, plus thirty-five thousand dollars in taxes. They have to pay the taxes because they're not in a governmental building anymore. So if you're in a building used for governmental use, you don't pay taxes. But they now pay taxes to the town. There's twenty-four employees. There's twelve thousand six hundred square feet. There's five hundred square feet per person. So per person, there's, it would be about the size of a twenty-two by twenty-two room, about the size of a two-car garage. To give you an idea of how much room they have up in Kitty Hawk, which is so far out of town, and I don't think anybody's been up there too much. They bought all-new furniture and, and rehoused the whole place. They were, I remember being at the meetings. They, they weren't going to buy new furniture, but they bought all-new furniture. The interesting part about this is, is that they now want to look at purchasing land and building a four-million-dollar building, yet they have a ten-year lease. So these are all the things I told people on the telephone when they, when they called yesterday. The other interesting thing that's happened over the last two to three years is, is that the town was able to negotiate a new healthcare plan with the employees. We explained to the employees that if they joined the health savings plan where you pay, had a deductible, the town would pay the deductible, and that their premiums would go down. If they, if they joined us in that and did that, and it was, and approved by the voters as part of their collective bargaining agreements, we would save two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. The town employees moved forward. The town council took this idea to the schools, because the insurance company said to us, with the amount of employees they have, if the schools did this, they could save one million to one-point-five million dollars a year. The then-school board chairperson told us that they were not interested. Some of you maybe remember a couple of years ago, we had a mistake with the TIF, with the Department of Revenue, and there was six hundred thousand dollars that was transferred by mistake. That's six hundred thousand dollars. The town went and asked the, the school to return it. Their portion would have been four hundred thousand dollars. Their answer to us is, is, and by the now-school board chairperson, not one percent. So the town had, was faced with a decision. Either we had to send out a supplemental tax bill, or we just had to cover it. So the town did what they had to do to cover the six hundred thousand dollars. So during that fiscal year, we returned one-point-five million dollars to the taxpayers. The thing about it is, is that when they got to the end of the year, the school was told by the, the, the school department was told by the state, you need to return the money to, which they did. So that money was returned to the taxpayers. I've read a number of pieces about the fire department. The fire department project is, is almost complete. It was, it was done, the vote was two years ago. The first payment we're making this year is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's not what's driving up the rate of the taxes. Over the next twenty years, we'll pay approximately three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year. On the town side, what we reviewed on Saturday was, is over the past ten years, any new police, fire, or public works employee that has been hired by the town to increase headcount to provide services. The town council made the decision to take that to the ballot and ask the town, the people who vote and pay the taxes, do you want to hire people? We didn't unilaterally make that decision. Today, I was reading the local newspaper, and it reported that we had an increase of three-point-seven million dollars on the town side. That's just bad information. DRA has had us reclassify the sewer fund and include it in the total budget. The sewer fund is self-funded by the users and does not have a tax rate impact. I was asked by many people, what is the abatement process? On the back of your tax bill, it actually spells out what the abatement process is. And at this time, I'm asking the council to direct the town manager to put that process on the website with directions and to help anybody who has any questions about how to abate their taxes. If you feel that your assessment was too high, then you should abate it. Also on Saturday, we discussed that fire calls for service are up, one thousand calls a year since two thousand and ten. Police are up approximately eight hundred calls per year. The other interesting part that we discussed that day was public works trash and recycling. I'm sure you've all read in the newspaper about, you know, China not wanting our stuff anymore. That has, you know, we've renegotiated our waste management contract. We actually did really well, but we pay over two million dollars a year to move trash and recycling in this town. These are some of the things that, you know, were discussed with people who called me and had questions about what, you know, why did my tax bill go up? Now, something did happen in this tax bill. What happened is, is that if, if your total tax bill was ten thousand dollars, and you paid forty-five hundred dollars in your first bill, and then you get a bill now for fifty-five hundred dollars, you're going, I went up a thousand dollars. But if you actually divide that number by nineteen-point-three-nine, you actually, if you look at it over a period of a year, you only went up, I think it's five hundred dollars. You went up. The town council has been speaking about this for two years. We've been telling people that the revenue that we can generate in order to offset taxes, our pipeline is getting smaller. We have a few more projects left in the town up on Pettingill Road that we're entertaining right now. With regards to Woodmont Orchards, Woodmont Orchard sits on what's called a development agreement. There's an agreement between the town and Woodmont Orchard's development agreement. It's called Pillsbury Realty. It's filed with the deed that they have to stay tax-neutral. What does that mean? What that means is, if they're generating a million dollars' worth of services, they have to change, generate a million dollars' worth of taxes. If they don't generate a million dollars' worth of taxes, they only generate eight hundred thousand dollars in taxes, they have to pay the difference. It's the first-ever development agreement in the state. Some United States senators have told me they haven't heard about it in the country. What we did was, is that that agreement, that development was so large, the council went ahead and did that agreement to protect the homeowner. And that's what the town council does here. What I would suggest is, we're happy to entertain your questions. We would also suggest that you actively go to the budget meeting for the school board. They have their budget meetings in December. Ask them questions. Why are we down a thousand students and up sixteen million dollars? Why do you want to build buildings when we had fifty-six hundred students in two thousand and six? I can't answer those questions. They're a separate form of government. The only other separate form of government we have in town is the library. They're run by the library trustees, yet funded by the town council. So with all that, let me ask Justin if he has anything to add. Justin Campo is our finance director. So he is here to answer your questions tonight. I have a representative, Beth, from the assessing department here, and the town manager, and the assistant town manager. Is there anything from the council before I go to the public?
I think you covered everything.
So folks, what we're trying to do is, is tell you everything we know. So we, we would welcome your questions. Yes? So all I need is your name and your address.
Okay. My name is Maura Ryan. I live at Two Snowberry Hollow in Lundary.
Okay. Welcome, Maura.
Also, I just wanted to add, if you ever want to know anything about the school board, the school budget, they do pass out a book every March.
Can you, you can sit down if you'd like.
Okay. I'll make it quick. Monday is Veterans Day, as you probably all know, because you're probably going to the nice breakfast across the street. I can't make it this year. But I did want to come back and ask Governor Sununu passed an increase to the veterans' tax credit for combat veterans. He increased it to seven-hundred-and-fifty, and I'd like to ask you to consider increasing it possibly incrementally over the next couple of years, because there hasn't been an increase in it in a long time. And the Wounded Warrior Project reports just came out stating that veterans have, you know, normally one, one single income for their families because they have wounded warriors. They're ninety-two percent, over twenty thousand dollars in debt. And I know you did increase the disabled veterans' tax credit last year, last March, February, March. But that is another thing that he did do, and Al Balde Sorrow from town very passionately argued for it. Obviously, he can't come in here and argue here because he would be a beneficiary of it, but it is something I'd like you to consider.
Um, we're, we have a program we're rolling out, right?
On this particular one? On the combat veterans' tax credit?
All right. Where are we on veterans' tax credits? Let's just get there first.
Sure. Beth, you want to come up and talk about it?
Where would you like me?
Let's just, let's, let's level set where we are, and then, then we can go from there.
I can't answer the question if you'd like me to.
She's from the assessing department. It's part of her job. She's supposed to know.
Hi, my, yeah. Hi, my name is Beth Charlotte Boy. I work, I'm the assistant assessor here in the town of Lundary. We have several different veteran credits and exemptions. And as far, I think you're referring to the standard veterans' tax credit, which is, okay.
It was an all-veterans' tax credit, which is three hundred dollars.
Yep, and that one?
A combat veterans' tax credit. That's the one that I'm talking about.
Okay.
Disabled veterans.
Okay. So, so the, the all-veterans' credit, right now, we, we rolled that out over a series of three years. The first year was a hundred dollars. The second year, which is this year currently, is three hundred dollars. And next year will be the total amount of five hundred dollars. And the, the combat veterans' tax credit, it's, it's a combat tax credit, correct? It's not a veterans' tax credit. It's people who are currently serving. And that is, the limit on that is seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. We do not have that right now. I think only one town in the state has approved it as of right now.
But we're working on it.
Okay. Well, I tell you what, we can, you know, if you guys want, we can take it as an agenda item and look into it.
I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Obviously, I rec, I, I'm an educational advocate, but I'm also a veteran, and I go around and I try to advocate for veterans wherever I can. And I am going around the state to talk to town councils about it. I do live in town, so I would like to bring it to your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is a good time to add to, Maura. First, thank you for your service to our country. Certainly, if there are any veterans who are watching this, who have not applied for any of the tax credits we currently tack, credits we currently offer, we'd encourage them to do so. This council, going into this fiscal year, is giving back almost six hundred thousand dollars in the way of tax credits to our veterans in this community. So it's not an insignificant number.
No, it's not, and we do appreciate it. And I did post all of the instructions for applying for the credits, and what dates they have to go in and everything, and the different types of credits. So I have posted those on different pages for veterans.
Great. Thank you, Maura.
Thank you.
Anyone else under public comment? Yes, Cindy.
Hi, Cindy Abbott, sixty-nine Shasta. So I understand all about the assessment. I guess, when was it decided we were going to do the assessment this year? Because I, maybe I'm the only one, but I'm, this is the first I heard of it. So when did we decide we were going to do it?
We're on a five-year cycle, right?
Right. Yeah. It's, it's been discussed for over a year.
So is this posted anywhere where normal people that don't come to your meetings read your minutes? Like, I mean, I, I didn't know about it. And the only reason I'm saying this is I feel, right at this point, just finding out about it, and my tax bill went up six hundred and seventy-five dollars, it's kind of like you're cashing in now, because you know the property values are up. Like, I want to know, did you decide this back in March? Did you decide it in January? You say you decided it last year. Should we have made people aware of it when we were voting on the budget and things like that?
Well, as, as the chairman just pointed out, we're on a five-year cycle. So we do, we do the re, no, we have been on a five-year cycle. So the last one was in two thousand and fourteen. The one before that was in two thousand and nine. So two thousand and nineteen, on that five-year cycle, was the next time for a revaluation. So it was really decided in two thousand and fourteen that the next one would be two thousand and nineteen because of that five-year cycle. But we've been talking about it. It was, it's, I know it's been reported in the newspaper, the local newspaper, several times, that we were having the revaluation, because one of the things, we, and we talked about it over the summer as well, to let, make people aware that because home values in the market had risen so much, that people were going to see a, a pretty dramatic increase in their assessments.
Yeah. Well, I guess I didn't hear about it, so I don't know what paper you put it in. I don't know, like, I didn't see it posted anywhere. You, I see a lot of other things posted. I think you should have done a better job of letting people know. I don't think, judging by the people that are here and the people I've heard from, I'm the only one in town that wasn't aware of it. The only reason I say that, I mean, my assessment is what it is, but I might have made different decisions on, you know, what we vote on. When we vote on things, a lot of times it says, this is your tax impact. This is your, you know, what it's going to be on your taxes. When you get an increase like this, I'm not so sure that everything's being disclosed at that time you're voting on it. The other thing is, I, I just have a question. So you had a budget that started in June, or whenever, July, and will end in June. And that's what we voted on in March, right?
Correct.
Okay. So now, when you did that budget, what tax rate did you base it on? The one at that time and the assessments at that time?
No, it, it was based on the pre, it was based on a one-and-a-half percent increase in the previous valuation. And one of the things that I had mentioned during, if you were to watch the budget meetings last year at this time, one of the things that I talked about was that it was a reval year, and so this valuation was going to be a lot higher than what the estimate was. The thing is, is that when are you doing a town-wide revaluation without having, it, it's hard to make an educated guess to say, okay, these homes are going to go up twenty percent, these are twenty-five, commercial values are going to go up, whatever it is. So it's the, the most difficult times to do an estimated tax impact, or in those revale years, because the market can be, you know, fluctuating in, in any one of those years.
So my evaluation went up sixty-three thousand dollars. I mean, so my taxes are going up a lot. You know, so I don't know, like, what about the commercial side? Like, what percentage, what did they go up?
Commercials were, did not go up as high as the residentials. The residentials are what have been driving the increase in the assessments. And again, that's based all on market analysis. So we contract with a commercial and industrial assessor who's certified and licensed by the state. Same as our assessors in the assessing department, they do our residential assessments. And then the Department of Revenue has to certify all of it. They have to look at all of our numbers, look at the people we contract with to do the commercials, and say, yes, this is in fact in line with what the market is doing in Lundary. The reality is, commercial property values haven't increased as much as residential property values. That's also what drove our market ratio down so much before the assessment. So we were at about eighty-three percent of market prior to this assessment. So the tax bills you were getting were significantly under value of what the market was at that time. But that's also what was causing, as, as John mentioned earlier, the commercial properties to file abatements because the ratio was so low. And that hurt the town, because we had to give those, essentially give those abatements, because they based it on the ratio. So by doing the town-wide revaluation, hopefully that number's going to be as close to one hundred as best we can. But I can tell you this, the market's already gone up since April first, and that's what those values are based on. They're based on April first numbers. The market is so good in Lundary right now, that the values between April one of this year and now November, they're already increased. So we'll probably be just below a hundred when we get that ratio from the Department of Revenue.
And are you going to stay on a five-year plan? Are you going to go to every other year, or what?
The, the plan right, the plan right now is to go to an every other year. The larger municipalities are, are doing that. Bedford recently went to an every other year. And again, the reason is because the, when you're on that five-year, a lot can happen in that, those five years. And that doesn't mean, just because we're on an every other year, that people are going to see their assessments go up every other year. Because if the market starts to go down, if the economy starts to go down, if we're going to a recession, then people will see a, you know, a comparable decrease in their home values, assuming that's what happens in the market.
We're going to talk about that publicly at the council meetings, so that people know we're doing that.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And to, and to your, and to your point, Mrs. Abbott, I would agree, we could have done a better job at posting more around to let people know this was coming. Oftentimes, we're, we're in our bubble, so we, we're talking about it. We see it in the paper. But we forget sometimes that people are, are doing things in their lives and not watching these meetings. And so we'll do a much better job when it comes around again.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to mention, and Cindy, you brought up a good point about the, the commercial versus residential. I'll get, I'll get to that in a minute, but I want to correct a misconception that, that happens frequently, and that is, when is a revaluation? There's chatter among the community that, well, the, the government's now getting a lot more money. What are they doing with all that money? And that's not true. In a, in a revaluation, the government doesn't get any more money. In a perfect world, if the, if the government had level budget from year to year, they don't, but just to follow the math, if it's level from year to year, if the valuations go up, then the corresponding tax rate goes down, and the, and a nine-thousand-dollar tax bill before the revaluation will still be a nine-thousand-dollar tax bill afterwards, because the tax rate will because the tax rate will be lower. So the increase in $60,000 multiplied by a lower tax rate should equalize. Now, it doesn't for two reasons. One, the spending of the two primary governments in town has gone up one more than the other, but just for, that's not important right now, just for this example. And the other reason is because, what you mentioned, is the share, the sharing between commercial and residential is, sometimes changes during that revaluation. In this particular revaluation, the commercial didn't come up as much as the residential. We've seen it the opposite way, where the residential stays lower and the commercial comes up. And the tax, the tax burden shifts to the commercial and industrial side as well. In this case, it's shifting a little bit more to the residential. Unfortunately, for residents, that's bad news. For business owners, it's good news. So it really depends on which side of that line you might reside on. So just, just to be clear, when, when revaluations come out, again, in all things being equal, the tax rate should drop by the same rate that evaluations went up to make it a net zero impact to the, to the total town. If there was only one house in town, that's, that's how it would work. Because there are so many different neighborhoods, some more desirable than others, and you have the complicating factor of commercial properties being evaluated and being considered as well. It's not exactly the same. But, but I wanted to dispel the notion that some people have that don't follow this very closely, that when valuations go up, revenues go up. They don't. We can't collect any more money in revenues than the taxpayers approve at the ballot. So that your tax rate is, is kind of, and our attending assessor here can correct me if I'm wrong, but you kind of work backwards. You start with the budget and you work backwards from the budget. Say, how much, how much does our tax rate need to be in order to generate the budget or generate the amount of money that the voters approved in the budget? And that's, and then it goes to Concord and they, they look, you know, through all our paperwork and software to make sure that it's right. And then the tax rate's declared based on that. But it starts with the budget approval and then works backwards from there that turns into a tax rate. And then combined with the valuation of the tax rate, that's what generates your tax bill. Did I get it right?
Yes, you did. Very good job.
Okay. So, all right, with that said, is there any more public comment? Yes.
Hi. My name is Edan Vinitsky. I live in 133 Beaconsfield Road in Brookline, Massachusetts. And I never spoke here before, but this is my, the last time I attend a town council is I am moving back to Israel with my family next week. So I just wanted to, I know that some people are watching this on the access channel. So I just wanted to thank everybody for welcoming, welcoming me into your beautiful town, helping me learn about history, answer all my questions, Kirby, Justin.
Captain Cheetham.
Everybody. So thank you. That was a great experience. And, you know, keep on going. Keep up the good work.
No, you'll be going, where in Israel will you be moving to?
Near Tel Aviv, like everything else.
I've heard they've had beautiful beaches there.
Absolutely. And if I'm already here, I just came back from the girls' soccer game. So on Saturday at 2:00 PM, there's a football game, London Derry against Pickerton. Obviously, everybody knows about that. On Sunday, if anybody wants to come and cheer for the team, at Memorial, 3:15, it's the Unified Finals. And right after that is the Girls' Finals, which they won 1-0 today. So thank you for, thank you, everyone.
Best of luck, Edan.
Good luck with your travels.
So, only last comments we'll say is, as far as the town's concerned, as far as capital improvements are concerned, we don't really see anything on the horizon for the next five to 10 years. We think we're in very good shape. With regards to evaluations, I think we've just crossed over the 4 billion mark.
Not quite for valuation.
So we're almost 4 billion?
Yeah, so actually with, with utilities, we would be over 4 billion, yes.
Well, it's old money, right?
Yes.
So we're, just to give folks an idea, so we're at $19.39 and we're just about 4 billion. We're about 800 million, 800 to 900 million higher valuation than Derry. And Derry's at 26.18. So I can only speak for the town side, but we're going to, we're going to try to hold the line here.
Yeah, it's actually about 4.5 billion with the utilities.
Okay. Well, like I said, what we're going to try to do is hold the line here. And I, like I said, I only can speak for the town side of government. Is there any other questions from the public?
I just wanted to mention, Mr. Chairman, as I'm looking at the tax rates, I'm looking at about 15 towns that surround us. And the, the good news is 12 of those towns have a higher tax rate than we do. Three have a lower tax rate. So we're on the, on the, on the positive side of that, of that spectrum. The bad news is that when you pay a tax bill, you're not really thinking about any, any other towns. You're only thinking about your own tax bill. And we understand that. But, but we also try to measure our competitive and comparative numbers with other local communities. And so far, we're, we're, we're better than most, not quite as good as some. So that's just a perspective that I offered to you.
Yes, just Mr. Douglas.
Glenn Douglas, Six Overlook Ave. I was at the water quality presentation at the town council meeting. I don't know, last town council meeting, where that was. I heard that Merrimack had a problem. I didn't really, you read it, they're getting bottled water. Okay, it's in Merrimack. And I also heard that there was a public meeting at Merrimack this last Monday, which I went to. And it was all about PFOA. It was four hours long. What Merrimack is dealing with now is putting in a $20 million water purification system to get rid of PFOA. The contamination area apparently is spread to 64 square miles. They said it's one of the largest contaminations, I believe, of PFOA in the United States. They, a person that commented, not the DES that was there, said that they have tested Penachuk water that they have brought into supply houses. I'm not saying this is in Londonderry, but they said in Merrimack, Penachuk water is now coming in above the state recommended PFOA limits. The big concern was, for the public hearing, is St. Cobain is going to put in an air cleaner to clean the air so that PFOA doesn't get really sniffed into the air. A byproduct of this cleaner, which people are commenting that it was only going to cost $3 million, but other St. Cobain companies have paid $90 million, is it creates hydrogen fluoride, which the state says is below the recommended limits. Hydrogen fluoride mixes with moisture, causes hydrogen fluoride acid, which is exceptionally toxic. All the people there were very concerned about the air quality. They also said that they are testing an additional 1,000 wells in Merrimack. And I believe that's spreading into possibly Londonderry. The water quality study that was authorized, it was an air and water quality study. So I'm curious if we're going to do anything to monitor what is in the air in Londonderry. Because this seems to be a huge, huge, I mean, I was shocked. 700 houses bringing in water. There was a gentleman from Londonderry. He said his well tested positive the same day he got the letter that said it tested positive. He had to deliver you 600 gallons of water that he didn't request. It was just dropped in his driveway. Merrimack is behind the eight ball, huge. St. Cobain is horribly polluted and it's leaching. I guess, good for us. It's going toward Hollis and away from us. So groundwater, it seems to be going that way. But it is apparently creeping into Londonderry. I don't know what this hydrogen fluoride is, but I talked to some engineers at work and he said, that stuff's bad news. And the kicker with this is, PFOAs, back in the day, the state said, is not a problem. 20 years later, it's a huge problem. I guess we all have Teflon in our bodies. You can't test a person in the United States that's not contaminated with Teflon, which I guess is what PFOA is. So that's the water thing. The second thing, which I wasn't going to mention, is back in the day, a long time ago, when I first started paying attention, we had these joint meetings. We had school board, budget committee, and town council. You guys all sat in the same room, wrapped the whole thing. Everyone talked about budgets, how it affected the town. That stopped. Don't really know why. I think it needs to come back because obviously there is a division between town governments. I've seen jabs on the school board side. I've seen jabs on the town council side. So I'm asking that maybe it would be in the best interest of the town if we went back to doing that and put everyone in the same room. And when the statement of it's the same, two pockets, same pants, wallet, whatever, you guys need to all get together. I mean, this is just, this is bad.
Well, we stand open to having a meeting with them anytime they're ready. And we've told them that. And we're ready anytime they want.
Alls I'm saying is, I'm asking, because I'm sure the school board's going to hear, I'm asking everyone on those three boards, budget committee, they haven't been involved, so I can't. But the two, two boards need to get together.
And we agree, I agree with your comments.
So, that's it.
With regards to the water, thank you for bringing that information. It's very much appreciated. As you are aware, because you were here at the last meeting, we've engaged our council. We're moving as fast as we can. We have found out that people who are west of High Range Road, which is where I live as well, is already are receiving letters. And they're already moving on testing the wells west of High Range Road. And as the guy from DES said here, that's a legal line, not necessarily a scientific line.
I understand the water. It's the air.
And now is probably a good time, if we're going through budgets, to see what we can do.
Well, the $35,000 that was authorized was authorized specifically for air and water quality study, not just water. So we already put 35 grand up.
I agree with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, we do, we do check air quality. We have a station by the kindergarten. I don't think we're checking PFOAs at this point. The standards, the air standards are so new that I don't believe we have the capability to check that yet. But that, to gentlemen's point, that's certainly something that we had, in general, to continuously check air quality. And we have been doing that. But again, our technical ability to check PFOAs in the air, I don't believe we're capable yet of doing that. As far as the water goes, there is some nuance. We've talked, those that talk about Penachuk, maybe some contaminants in the Penachuk provided water. In Merrimack, the Penachuk, Penachuk is the water supply contractor. You may or may not know about, their, their primary plant operation is in Nashua. And the water that Merrimack is supplied by Nashua is, comes from Nashua, typically in the Nashua aquifers. And that's, that's, I believe, is the source of the contamination that, that was just discussed about, that's coming through in the Penachuk system. Now, in, in Londonderry, we also receive Penachuk water to about 15 to 18% of homes and businesses. But that, although Penachuk is the, is who you pay the bill to, the nuance there is the source of the water is different than what Merrimack gets. The source of the water that Londonderry gets from Penachuk is purchased from the Manchester Water Works. And Manchester gets the majority of their water from Lake Massa Besik and some of it from the Merrimack River and then purifies it. So the, the sources of the water is very different between Londonderry and Merrimack. It's, that's just FYI. It's not an excuse or, or anything else. I think, as the chairman just mentioned, we're just kind of beginning our assault on this, on this PFOA water contamination. And we've engaged our town attorney to see what our legal options might be. But to Cindy's point earlier, there may be a tax impact at some point. We may, we may go to the voters and say, we need to put in some more municipal water lines and to provide purified water so people aren't pulling contaminated water out of their wells. Again, that's expensive. Maybe we can get the contaminating agency to help pay for that. Maybe we can get some help from the state. It's a, it's a black room that we're going to be walking into there. We really don't know what the outcome's going to be. But the only thing I can say is, stay tuned. This is a, this is an issue that is probably going to dominate town politics and, and solutions, potential solutions for the next several years. As this, as we learn more about this, we figure out how to test for these contaminants. And the DES makes some scientific decisions on what level of contamination is safe versus unsafe. I mean, we've, we've started, we heard, when we're in the trillions of parts, in parts per trillion, I think the analogy was, it's a drop of water in an Olympic pool.
50 Olympic pools.
50 Olympic pools. So, so I mean, it's a very, very tiny amount of contamination. So, and, and now, PFOAs seems to have most people's attention and it's the biggest thing in the, in the news media. But with the, with the allowable contamination or the, the amount of contamination that is considered okay by our environmental brothers and sisters, we're finding that arsenic is, is one of the contaminants that is sneaking up on us. Because where, when we evaluate wells and we see arsenic in the wells, it's at a, it was at a level that was so low that, you know, you don't need to be all that concerned about it. But now, that level of arsenic hasn't gone up, but the standard has gotten so much tighter, the, on arsenic, for example, that what, the level of arsenic you had five years ago is the same you have now, but the standard has, has changed so much that now you're alerted to the fact that you may have a dangerous level of arsenic in your, in your well. That's unchanged, but the science has come back to say that you probably shouldn't be consuming that amount of arsenic for the, for a reason X, Y, and Z. So it is a rapidly changing science. And we're trying to stay on top of it and, and, you know, and be as transparent as possible and do what we think is right for the community. And at some point in time, we may need to go to the community and say, there's some costs associated with, with making sure our water is cleaner than it is now. And we'll put all the options on the table. And, and we certainly will push as hard as we legally can to get the polluters to help, if not pay for all of it, to at least help pay for some of it going forward. So I just offer that for FYI.
Anything further from the public?
Mr. Chairman, I just, I want to correct myself from earlier. I did look up that optional tax credit for combat service.
Yes.
And the maximum amount is $500, not $750.
We'll review that at a future meeting. Thank you. Okay, folks, if, I guess. Hi, just name and address, please.
Kristy Brynbeck. And we just purchased in February '82 High Range Road. We are new to this area. And we did a lot of research before we bought in Londonderry. And instead of, our tax bill went up and it shocked me. But we have called the police department for a few situations. We see the fire department go by our house on a regular basis. We've called the town clerk for a complaint for a ditch. Every time we call any public services, everybody is immediately there to help. We've received positive feedback and positive help from everybody in this town. So for us, it's been well worth the investment. And we're grateful that we're in this town. I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, thank you. It's very much appreciated.
Good feedback.
Okay, folks, with that, if there's any further public comment, I'm going to close public comment. We're going to move on with the agenda. We're going to move on with the agenda.
I was going to have one other comment. Looking through, you know, 2018's public tax rates from all towns across the state, really the only comparable town or city across the state that has the same kind of valuations as us is Concord. And they're spending drastically much more on the municipal side than the school side. And their taxes are 28.19 in 2018, whereas ours were the 21.80 per thousand. So, and they have a higher valuation than ours by about $200 million. So I think we are really driving the town in the right direction with where we're going with our expenses. And, you know, we're spending wisely, but, you know, we're not overspending. We're not trying to, you know, drastically overdo these services, but we're doing a good job of directing our services throughout town in the right direction. So to compare us to one of, you know, our state capital and the whole state with almost the same valuations, we're doing, I think, a pretty good damn job.
Okay. Alright, so I'm going to close public comment and move on with the agenda. If you, feel free to leave. We're just going to move on to the budget workshop. Thank you for coming. Okay, let's move to the budget workshop, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There were some parking lot questions that Justin has answers to. But before we get into that, just a few items I want to bring to the council's attention. The first is, there's an adjustment in both the proposed and default budgets of about $170,000 in the default, $177,000 in the proposed. And that would be a reduction in both of those. The reason for that is because the collective bargaining contracts end at the end of this fiscal year. And so while we would normally budget the cost of living increases each year in the default and the proposed, those will be done with separate warrant articles, assuming there are agreements on a collective bargaining contracts for the unions. So, Justin, what is the actual delta now between the default and the proposed?
It is $6,992.
Okay.
Okay.
Below.
Below, yes.
Below, yeah. Justin, why don't you, if you want to run through a couple of, or the items that we had from Saturday's meeting?
Yes. One of the questions you guys had was about the ambulance billing. And I gave you guys a little handout that shows what we've collected. We estimate $625,000 of revenue from the ambulance billing. Over the past years, we have collected actual cash, real money in, of greater than that. Ambulance billing gets a little tricky because we don't have full control over what Medicare insurance is and all of them will pay. So if you look, there are statutory adjustments that we have no control over. That is considered net billing at that point.
Okay. That's been an ongoing thing for several years.
Yeah, and just, go ahead, Justin.
One of the things I just want to emphasize with this is we end up hitting the revenue mark, so it doesn't end up costing more than we expected at that point.
Okay.
Just to remind the council, one of the things we started doing a couple of years ago is we do send any past invoices that are over. When does it get sent to the collections agency after it goes from our billing? Is it 90 days?
It's, I believe it's 120, but there are circumstances that will push it back further. If our coastal medical billing is our, medical billing, is our ambulance billing company. If they are in talks with the insurance company and they believe it'll be paid by the insurance company, they'll hold on to it for a little longer because our collections company can't get money from insurance company, only individuals.
Right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was reading the bonds.
So I'm seeing year-to-date so far, we've only collected net billings of $380,000 compared to FY19. It was 934. When are we usually seeing the majority of the money coming in throughout the year process? And we're almost six months in.
Well, at this point, this is based on October.
October, okay. So we're four months in.
Correct. And where it gets difficult with ambulance billing is it's, it's delayed because of the insurance companies.
Okay.
So a lot of the collections we have here are probably from several, a little bit ago. That's one of the reasons we fought with our coastal medical billing, is they wanted to hold on to them longer. However, when we spoke with the collections company, they said, once it hits a certain point, there's not much we can do and we run the risk of not getting anything for it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Tom.
Justin, what's the, what is the, the net billing cycle? Is it a net 30, net 45 for ambulance billing? What do we typically look for? I mean, I know this is through October, but if it's a net 30 or net 60, we may be looking at, at good numbers from September.
Right. So again, that goes back to when we get it from the insurance company. Let's say you take an ambulance ride, let's say you take an ambulance ride July 1st. The insurance company may not talk till coastal until July 31st, August. So at that point, that's a month down. It then probably takes them a couple of weeks to determine how much they're willing to pay, how much they have to pay. Then we're now midway through August. Then I believe it's a net 30 from that point where we send it out to the individual who rode the ambulance.
So you're, so the, so as I look at, think of the calendar, so that is, that is...
We're basically operating about four months behind.
About 75 days from the ambulance ride to the time you clear the billing or at least turn it over to collection.
Right. Depending on the insurance company, some get it done quicker, some send them to the individuals.
Yeah.
That it depends on the insurance company.
So it's almost three to four months behind.
And I think that's normal. I don't think we're any different than any other community.
No, it's just, it's good information for us to know.
You're the beast.
And Justin, just remind us, because the budget committee asked, if we were to move this out of a revenue source and make it into its own revolving account, what would the tax impact be of doing that?
If we were to remove this and have essentially free ambulance rides for anyone who takes it, it would...
Oh, yes, right. Because that was the question that came up is, even though it's against the law to charge, to not charge residents for ambulance rides, let's say the law changed and we were allowed to do it, what's the tax impact of that?
It would be 13 cents every year. Not increasing, but this year 13 cents, next year another 13 cents. It's the same 13 cents throughout.
On the tax rate.
Yes, let's not do that.
Right.
Okay.
Next.
Any other parking lot questions?
I believe that's all you had for me.
Oh, no. We only spoke about ambulance, not parking lot.
No, no, there was parking lot questions from the day.
Like water cooler.
Different parking lot.
Water cooler questions.
It was a town parking lot, and these were parking lot questions.
Okay.
In other words, you know, I said to him, I said, hey, can you like, you know, create a parking locker question so that we can just catch them?
I see.
And then somebody brought up a parking lot. So it wasn't meant to confuse anybody, it just happened to be a coincidence.
Yanos, do you have a number on the waste management for the school? Another parking lot question?
There was a parking lot question too for me last night. So, so just to be clear, parking lot issues and questions have nothing to do with parking lots?
Mine had...
If we're talking about paving of a lot.
Right.
Can we move parking lot questions to water cooler questions going forward?
This is...
Water cooler, thank you.
Okay, I had...
Source of confusion in the public.
On Saturday, I had two questions. The one, one was...
There was some source of confusion in the public. What the chairman had referred to as the parking lot is a corporate euphemism for a collection of questions that were a little bit off topic, that we would, we would answer later. And often in the corporate world, you put them in a so-called parking lot. You, you, you park those questions.
You explained to me? No, I understand. I understood. I wasn't confused.
Put those issues in a so-called, in a virtual parking lot. And then you take them, you, you capture them so you don't forget about them. And then you take them up at a later time. You're not, we're not really talking about anything to do with any of our parking lots, except there is a parking lot.
That was a question.
Okay, well, that's enough about parking lots. What's left about waste?
When it comes to the, to the number, how much we are spending on picking up the solid waste and recycling from schools, it's $124,000 right now. This is a number we ask Waste to calculate for us, and they came up with this number for us. $124,000 on average right now.
Annually.
Annually, yeah.
Okay.
And our contract goes up, so it'll be more, you know, each year. But right now, that's, that's the number on average.
Number nine.
Yeah. And...
Thank you, Yanos.
A question for Yanos. Do you know, or maybe a better question for Kevin. Do you know, do other communities typically have the town government paying for that expense for the school government, or is it, is it, is it billed back to the school?
Yeah, I don't know offhand. I can find out.
Yeah, I think, I think we should try to be, I don't, I'm not thinking we should make, break new ground, but I think if, if we look around at our neighboring communities and they all build back to the, to the other government, then why should we be different?
Well, given that we've made many changes in the last year and billed back multiple things to the, to the school, for right now, let's just, you know...
Right. I think, I think as, as we compare tax rates to other communities, it's better to have apples to apples, otherwise it's not a valid comparison.
Yeah. I'm not looking to pass anything more to them than we already have, but sure, take a look at it.
Yeah, you're playing the nice guy, that's all.
Just, because I said at the last meeting that we weren't going to try to do that. But anyway, let's just keep on going. Or I can put it in the, you know, that other area.
In the virtual parking lot?
In the other area. Is there anything else on the budget?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like Chief Hart to come up, if he would, just to give us an update on the...
I have to go to the bathroom.
Would that be the virtual bathroom?
Parking lot?
Yeah. In fact, I really don't want to use the bathroom, so, you know, let's just, let's just move forward.
Chief Hart with an update on the generator.
My suggestion, after looking into this, as everyone knows, it was a source of some controversy. As we had put it on the CIP, it was approved during last year's budget process. We've taken a real hard look at it and made the determination that the window is pretty, much further out there than we thought. So my suggestion would be to return that money to the taxpayers and alleviate some of the tax burden that they're going to face this year. It's not that we don't need it, and it's not that it's not part of our long-term plan, but we don't need it now, and there are other priorities. So I'll take any questions that anybody has.
I'll go here and then I'll go there.
There's two, two ways to return it to the taxpayers. One is to, is to reduce the tax rate and give it back. The other way is to put it in the undesigned fund balance and hold it there in a rainy day fund, so that when we do need it, it's there. And otherwise, we'd have to go back with another warrant article to ask for that money again when we do need it to, to gather that money to buy it.
It was coming from the UFB anyway, right?
Correct.
So we just don't take it, right?
Correct. Okay. All right, then I guess that solves that.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Tim.
Probably at least 10 years. We're at a, we're at a, we were looking at a five-year window. We're probably looking at a 10-year window. It has about 600 hours total on that generator now. The life expectancy is significantly longer than that. So the, the theory is that we do need some redundancy in there. We looked at perhaps using it in different ways, maybe assisting the fire department, maybe assisting this building. But none of those seem to work as effectively as taking this choice now and waiting until that time comes. I'm thinking 10 years. And then bring it to the voters again. It is after all their money.
My memory is a little fuzzy. What was the total amount on that?
$250,000.
$250,000.
$250,000?
Yep.
Okay.
My question is to Justin. Since the voters did approve this, and we don't expend it in this FY, can, can we allow that money to sit in the UFB unexpended and use their authority, which they voted last spring, to spend that money in five years? Or do we have to go back to the voters again? And you can research that if you want to, but...
In five years, the answer is no. This warrant article, the way it was written, at the end of this fiscal year, you have the ability to extend it for another year. And at that point, you'd have to go back to the voters again.
Okay.
So based on the chief's timeline, it seems like the best option is to, what, return to the UFB.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're good? You're good, chief?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Okay, anything else budget?
No.
Anything else budget? Anybody else with budget? Anybody in the room on budget?
Anyone from the budget committees?
Mr. Chairman, just if I could, I did get a inquiry from the rec director looking for some direction from the rec commission on whether or not they should be seeking to put a citizen's petition on, or if it's something that the capital fund that they are requesting for...
Their vehicle maintenance?
Yeah, the vehicle maintenance, vehicle purchases, small vehicles.
What's that?
All equipment.
All equipment, right.
I personally don't have an issue with it.
Okay.
To what? To create a expendable maintenance trust fund with the voters for $15,000.
Capital reserve fund.
I thought it was more than 15.
No.
It was 15?
Only 15?
Oh.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll pass that along.
All right. Anything else budget-wise, money-wise? All right, folks, next time we'll be talking about budgets will be November 25th. That is the Monday before Thanksgiving. So if you're in town and you want to know how your money's being spent, please come down here and ask. We will entertain all questions and try to get you the best answer possible. And if we don't know, we'll find it. All right, next item, Old Home Day discussion. Lisa.
So, Mr. Chairman, as of the last meeting, I had raised the issue with the council that the current Old Home Day chair, as well as a couple of members of the committee, have indicated their intention to resign after 20-plus years of successfully putting on Old Home Day. So the question becomes, what next?
So, so interestingly, I had some feedback in the community that I, and there was some feedback here the other day. And, you know, it does resonate a little bit around, around volunteers. And this is just an idea. I don't know if it's a good idea, but it's just an idea. Perhaps what we should do is look into creating what we've done in the past on some different issues. A task force committee that would be charged with, you know, seeing what the path should be going forward. But at the same time, it would be an at-large task force. We'd solicit people from the community to get involved and maybe create a volunteer groundswell to see if we can get more people involved before we have to take it on as staff 100%. Just an idea.
It's a good idea.
I mean, there was a comment made in the prior meetings that the, I don't believe it was the chamber who took it over at one point, but if we could have...
They took it from the chamber.
Right, we took it from the chamber, but if we could potentially have, you know, members from the business community who would have some viable interest in it, again, that would be, I think, a great effort.
So...
Well, and maybe with this task force, we can solicit some of those business members.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think it may be in retrospect, as we look at how we've operated the Old Home Day committee over the past couple of decades, I think we turned to the same volunteers over and over again. We kind of burned out our resources. So I think, I think that's, that's probably at the root cause of the, of what we're facing right now. We, we overutilize and burnt out the, some very good resources.
Certainly. And I think we have some wonderful new businesses in town with very good leadership within the, that community that, you know, I know their time is very much taken as it is, but if they would want to be, volunteer some of their time for this, I think that would be a great asset for us.
And I also think it's beneficial to, to have the town oversight at the same time. And the reason being is if you rely solely on volunteers to do it, right? At some point, those volunteers go away. John knows, a few years ago, kind of out of the blue, the Rotary, who puts on the Christmas on the Commons, didn't have the bandwidth one year and weren't going to do it. And John intervened and said, we can't just have this thing go away. It's a, it's a town tradition, the kids love it, and what can we do to, to help you guys out? But something similar like that could happen at Old Home Day if it was just a group of volunteers without any town oversight. So I think having that combination of volunteers, but with town oversight is probably the best way to, to go with something like that.
Yeah, I would say... Yeah, I would say that, as we consider a charge to, to a, a committee that has not yet been formed, I think one of the sticky issues, the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room that we need to talk about is, is the political aspect of Old Home Days, since we're in New Hampshire, we're very visible, this is a parade that is seen by thousands of people, and political wannabes are, or even folks that are already incumbents, often march in the parade, and one of the, one of the sources of potential irritation over the past several years is, who gets invited, and who gets, who misses the invitation, and who marches in what order, who's first, who's second?
Well, it all needs to be nonpartisan, so...
Whoa, 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 stop. Two years ago, we fixed all this, we put all the rules in place, all the invitations come out from the town manager's office, there are no politics in Old Home Day. There are no politics, there just aren't.
Well, we should be sensitive to whatever we, whatever we create new, what we fix the system that...
The rules are already in place, they don't have to change them, they're there. Mike Ram still wrote them, seriously. Because three or four years ago, we had a problem, and we fixed it.
I, well...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that, I've been there already.
My, my point is...
Tim was with me.
We ought to make, make it clear to the, this new entity that we might create, of what that fix was, to make sure that they go into this with eyes wide open.
The good news is, is we did do a few things right with Old Home Day, we did get some things straightened out, so, you know, Old Home Day can never be political. It could be, it'd be the end of Old Home Day.
Agreed.
So, but those, that structure is there.
Good.
And I made sure that was there, so... We're gonna need to move fast on this task force, we're gonna need answers by no later than February first, and we better, we're gonna move quick, really quick. Otherwise, the town's gonna have to take control in order for the, for the, for the event to continue. And again, reiterate, there can be no politics.
And I know a lot of the, I was involved at, at one year, and a lot of the groups get booked up between now and December and January, so we need to start getting moving on some of these potential groups that would be marching in the parade.
Right. So we gotta get organized, and we gotta move fast.
Yep.
Okay. All right, next item. Next item is ordinance two-oh-one-nine-dash-oh-six, an amendment to the zoning ordinance relative to the rezoning of MAP fourteen, Lot forty-five A.
So, Chairman, I would make a motion that we do not have a first reading, and that we accept the ordinance twenty-nineteen dash zero-six as presented and schedule a second reading and public hearing.
I will second that.
All's in favor, just come by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Our next meeting is November twenty-fifth, and this is the zoning for Industrial Two, Gateway Business Park, so we will see you then. Next item, I have an appropriate, I have some money being appropriated for the fire department, I believe.
Yep.
An order relative to the distribution of capital reserve funds from, for the fire department. Looks like we have a number of medical pieces here, chief.
Yes, so what this is, is we spoke about it a little bit on Saturday morning, this is the gear extractor, the gear dryer for the new central fire station. It's what we applied for, for the grant initially, but we were not successful with that grant. We are gonna go for another grant in the future for the other items that we were planning for the substations, but as of right now, we've reprioritized, so the AFG that we're going for this year is gonna be for our new breathing apparatus. So those two first lines are for the gear extractor and the gear dryer. The third line is through Zoll Medical, and that's for the townwide defibrillators to be placed throughout the town's vehicles and buildings.
Any questions? Accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept order twenty-nineteen dash twenty-five as presented by the chief.
Second?
All's in favor, just come by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just have one moment of your time, I just wanted to, I tried to get up in public comment, but figured I'd let the other citizens talk first. This coming Thursday, the fourteenth, there's gonna be a contingency from both the fire department and the police department going down to New York City. We've been working on trying to obtain a piece of the World Trade Center since middle of two thousand fifteen, early two thousand sixteen, and during that time, communication was good for, for a period of time, then it kind of fell off the radar a little bit, and within the last month and a half, it's really picked back up again, so we have secured a piece. We're going down on the fourteenth, we'll be coming back to Lunandary on the fifteenth. We're going down on the birthday of a gentleman that they've named the Tunnel to Towers Foundation after, so it's turned into a little bit larger event than I was expecting. While sitting here tonight, there was some correspondence going, going through, so I will inform you of all of them tomorrow, but it sounds like we're gonna get an escort up here from New York City, right to, right to the town of Lunandary, you know, with the Tunnel to Towers Foundation, along with state police and everybody else that's gonna come, so I just wanted to let you folks know. The plan is for it initially is, we're gonna put it in the lobby of the central fire station. I've got together with both North Branch and Port One Architecture to kind of donate some of their time in the spring, and we're gonna modify our front memorial a little bit, and we're gonna display this piece out on our front memorial, hopefully by the grand opening of the fire station.
So, chief, I'm gonna be out of town, so I'll miss that, but what I do want to tell you is, is have any of the people going, have you been to the museum?
I have not been to the museum since it first opened, and I heard there's a lot more stuff since I've been, so...
I would make arrangements to go to the museum, I'd probably do that early online.
Mm-hmm.
You need to allot between two and three hours. I went, that's about how long it takes to go through it.
Okay.
And you go all the way down to where the trains came in.
Okay.
And it's something you have to do.
Yeah.
It's, I guess the only thing I could say is, is it's a very emotional experience.
I look forward to it. Like I said, there's two police officers going down with us, and I'm bringing a couple of firefighters with me as well. One of the things on the bucket list for me, anyway, was to see if we could get accommodations to sleep at a city firehouse that night, so that's what they're doing right now, and hopefully...
There's actually one right across the street.
There is, so...
But it's, actually, there's a, it's one that survived, the tower's fallen.
Trucked in.
But there's also, there's also a couple hotels right, right there, and when you guys go around to the plaques, the name John W. Farrell, which is my name, is on that plaque, and it's a man who is the same age as me, with two daughters just like me, who worked for Canor Fitzgerald, who, who died that day, and grew up one town over from me.
Wow, okay.
So, and all their pictures are there, it's an unbelievably emotional experience.
I look forward to it.
So...
So I will inform you, Kevin, tomorrow, once I get all the details on what the process is of getting him back in here to Lunandary, and hopefully we can get that all straightened out, so, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve minutes as presented for October twenty-eighth, please.
So moved?
Second.
All's in favor, just come by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Liaison reports, we have anything on liaisons?
One item from, I guess, do we want to talk about for the, the change of the zoning when it comes up?
Sure, we can do it then.
Okay. I just thought it was a good note for the town.
Good, excellent, then we'll talk about it then. Town manager report?
Enough.
Anything else, Lisa?
Nope.
All right, Kirby did remind me of one thing, I guess we have a number of vacancies, and that she's gonna be posting board appointments, and that a number of people are not renewing their appointments for various reasons, so if you're interested in coming down and serving the community and learning about the government and how we get things done, you know, please apply. Is there anything else tonight?
Oh, one last item is, what items are there for the public and for veterans in town this coming weekend that people may partake in?
Yeah, so the Veterans Breakfast starts at eight AM, and that's at the high school cafeteria.
That is on a Monday?
That is on Saturday.
Saturday.